participate in this conversation. We are going to be, you're welcome to watch us and do all of that. But the partition, the participation will come during the stakeholder meeting. So Norman, I will turn it over to you.
Okay, I just want to first of all, thank you again for having confidence in us, especially in Paul and myself. And I guarantee you we'll find a very, very good superintendent. And of course, it's all up to the board and who they pick as far as superintendent is concerned. So keep that in front of you. When you talk about the legal issue, you do have an attorney in Durango that is checking everybody's searches. And making sure that everything is up and at them because of what happened in C. Boulder. And so I, I touched base with an attorney today. So I'll make sure that everybody's going to be on, on the up and at them on all this. Okay, so did everybody get the timeline that I sent out?
I did.
Okay, did everybody get the, the advertising information that I sent out?
Yes.
Okay, what about the, did you get the proposal? Okay, good.
That was the three you sent out and I just forwarded them all to the board.
Okay, good. Everybody has that, so we should be able to move rather quickly tonight. I just want to kind of reiterate a little bit, an item that's in the, in the proposal. And that's the five phases that you have. The first phase, of course, is what we're doing tonight. The second phase is basically the stakeholder input meetings. And we're going to, we're going to need to talk about those when we get to those. As well as part of that second phase is posting of the, posting of the position. And then of course recruiting and getting applicants. Third phase is about evaluation of the applicants. And that's purely up to Paul and I. Paul and I are in the middle of several searches right now. And then the fourth phase, of course, is the selection of the finalists. And we'll talk, we'll walk through that a little bit when that time comes. And then the last phase is the one that a lot of people don't realize that's unique about us. And that is we put it, we give you a guarantee of a two-year deal. In other words, if the superintendent leaves for any reason, makes no difference. We will do the next search for you without any charge for fees. In other words, I think we charge you eighty-five hundred dollars for fees. If within the next two years that superintendent that you select leaves, well then, we will do that free plus expenses. So just kind of recapping that a little bit. So what, what I like to do now is I'm going to disappear and I'm going to put up on, and you won't, I won't share the document with you. But I'd like to have each of the board members, if you as board members, list on a piece, on a pad that you may have by you. Five characteristics you would like to see with superintendent. What's going to happen is, is you're going to share those out. I'm going to list them. And eventually I'm going to put that all into a document. And I'll include it with the timeline and send it back to you for your, for your edits. Eventually we'll get that back. We need to have that in place so we can eventually post it. Okay, right. Paul, are you with us?
Totally with you.
Okay. So as far as the characteristics, when we look at the characteristics, if each of you would just basically go ahead and do that. And then I will go ahead and start dotting down. I'll ask for, for you, you as far as listing of your characteristics. But right now I'm going to give you about a minute to go ahead and list those characteristics. Anybody have any questions as far as what those characteristics might look at? Anybody?
No, Norman, I have it in electronic form. Do you want it in an email as well or?
Well, what you could do, if you've already done it, has everybody else done it as well?
I, I have four.
I have five.
I made up my own ad. I was just like, well, that's what I want and everybody else can put in what they want, so.
Well, you know what you could do, let's, let's, that's a good idea. Yeah, I like that strategy, Chris. Is that each of you would put it in an email form and send it to me. But I'd like to discuss those a little bit because I, I like to ask critical questions to kind of make sure that we get the super, the criteria that you guys agree like for superintendent. So if I can ask you, you have an interim superintendent now, what happened to the previous superintendent?
Uh, we don't have an interim. Our superintendent is our superintendent.
Oh, I'm sorry.
She's retiring.
Oh, I thought, I thought you said she was an interim. Okay.
No.
She's, she's just, okay, she's just basically looking like she needs to get up. Okay.
She has grandkids.
Oh, well, yeah, so do I. I missed that. But anyway, okay, so with that being the case, let's just have an open conversation. And then all of you will send their email to Cherry and then Cherry can send it to me. All the characteristics that you list, is that okay with everybody?
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do that. I like that idea. That way I can get more comprehensive. So somebody throw out what they think is the number one characteristic they're going to need to see in a superintendent.
I want to see communication with the community.
Okay, so community minded, okay, visible.
Yes.
Okay, others?
Okay, I, I would like to see as much transparency as the law will allow. Whether it's good, bad, or ugly, you know, it's part of school districts and life, so. Complete transparency as the law allows.
Others?
I would, I would like to see a superintendent who knows how to delegate to, you know, base, basically enhances the, the, the activities that her, that the, that the principals and, and, you know, other, other people do to, you know, show that they're appreciate, but more than that to, to actually be able to delegate effectively.
Or to empower?
Empower is, is a good word, yeah.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Yeah, that's great, yeah.
Okay, any others?
I'd like to see somebody that has knowledge of the Colorado educational systems laws. That they can come up, you know, face dealing with being in Colorado. I don't, since it is a nationwide search.
Law and finance or just law?
Yeah, I assume you'd extend that to finance, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
All right, others?
I'd like to have one that has, that's visionary, keeping academic excellence upfront. Along with having academic excellence, been able to come with a plan to action of how to keep us with academic excellence.
Okay, excellent. Oh, I shouldn't have used that word.
Visionary.
Got it. Others?
I'd be like a strategic thinker, problem solver. Someone that always has a solution for a problem and not a problem for a solution.
I've heard that so many times, all right.
I'd like somebody.
A high-performance examiner and I find that a lot. So anyway, okay. All right.
Oh, go ahead, Cherry.
I, I think that's.
I would like to have one that's approachable by everyone, and I don't mean just staff, but I mean community and that, that they feel like that they can approach, approach her and not feel intimidated, or him or her intimidated or, yeah, just approachable.
Okay, charismatic.
This year has showed me something and I think that we need somebody that's open to change and willing to look at new ideas.
I had that down as well, Cherry.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I, I think it's also important to have somebody that can effectively work with a, with a diverse community. I mean, we've got, we've, we've got a significant percentage of, of youth. We've got some Navajos. We've got, we've got Hispanics, which in, in total and some other minorities, smaller minority groups. But the, the, the percentage is, is slightly over 50%. And we're, you know, we're fairly diverse in, in terms of political philosophies, in terms of income and activities. So knowing, knowing how to effectively work and communicate with a very diverse group of people is, is important.
Yep, very good, thank you.
Absolutely.
Any others?
Lance, I haven't heard from you.
I think the, we need someone that's thick-skinned. And can take criticism because they're going to get it no matter what.
No matter what they do.
I think we need someone who is good at consensus building. I think that's an important thing in a, in a superintendent. And I also think this kind of dovetails with the other, what Sherry said. But we need a, someone that's a great community spokesman, someone that can speak to the community. Whether it's in the paper or on the radio, whether it's, whatever else. But to be able to be an eloquent spokesman for the district.
Kind of a face of the district, right?
Yes.
Yeah, a positive face.
Yes, respected, yeah.
There's, there's one thing that's missing. A big, big, big thing missing.
Well, I'm, I'm kind of wanting somebody that plans on staying for a while. I don't want to have to go through this, you know, four times in my, my board career.
What, what, what does that look like when you say stay? Five years, 10 years?
Well, you know, longevity, I mean, I would love to, to go back to when I was in school. You had a superintendent that stayed and they, and they, they, they just stayed. And there really weren't, just like the teachers, you know, longevity of teachers and to become, you know, just molded into the community. And I had somebody today tell me they had no idea who our superintendent was.
Oh, my gosh, and she's been there for what, three, four years?
Yeah, I think five, I think.
Yeah, and she's, and she's been admin forever, yeah.
Yeah, so, you know, somebody that can stick around long enough to, that, that can not be unrecognizable.
Longevity.
Oh, the kind of board that you have, it should be easy. Now, Jack Lee may be a problem, who knows? Okay, you're still missing one major issue. If I may say. And I'll just throw it at you.
Okay.
Character, ethics, integrity.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Trustworthy, okay. A lot of people take that for granted, but if you don't put it in there.
Right, okay. You were spot on.
You okay with that?
We, we, we walk around it, but we didn't say it.
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Have it in here.
Well, you have it in there, okay.
I actually had ethical at the top of my list.
Okay, anyway, so if I just assumed that, you know, that's what, who's, who the person's going to be. Okay, boy, you guys, like I said last time, this guy's got a, or this woman, this man has to walk on water pretty close. And I think it's good, this will be a good one. So really you want a communicator, that's what I heard initially. How you want an educator, you want a communicator, I mean, you want a leader. And you want somebody that's basically going to be able to solve problems. And so, okay, if you could send me the email and I think, I think we're going to be able to put up with, together some nice, on our work, some good language. And we'll turn this around within 24 hours, so, okay?
Okay, do you want them to send it to me and then me compile it? Or do you want us just, okay. So just if you have to send it to me, I'll send it out tomorrow.
That way it stays organized. If they try to all send it to me, then I get lost, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Sent to Cherry, okay.
All right, does everybody have the timeline in front of them?
I can get it there.
Yeah, that's what I need to do.
Timeline. That wasn't it.
There it is. Okay, I have it.
They have it?
I have it.
I'm working on it.
I'm working on it. Yes, I've got it now. We've got it.
All right. All right, so tonight is the 26th, first meeting. We're going to cover a number of other things as well. But then the next item that we have on the timeline is February 8th and 9th for stakeholder meetings. Is that going to work?
That works for me.
It really does, it, it's better, it's basically you're not involved in it. I'm wondering about staff being available, parents, community issues.
Community events, what have you.
Yeah, there's none of that, we're in good shape because that's Monday, Tuesday.
Um, since COVID, we're pretty well shut down.
Yeah, that's right. Okay, so we'll leave it, we'll leave that there then, February 8th and 9th. Then we'll come back to identify the stakeholders here in a minute. Okay, then, I didn't, I didn't include that in the list, but we need to do that tonight. Then February 10th is going to be online survey begins. Online survey, everybody have a feel for that. What happens there is, Patricia Jacobson will hit to, to the district. And then it'll be a link and then eventually people that are not part of the stakeholder groups can go online and respond to the same four questions. And so, so that would be the opening date. That's always a day after stakeholder input meetings.
Okay.
And then, and then we, we're giving it five days, which is about right. And then, and it would end, okay? And that's where basically the paper, if you have a local paper, your website can advertise that. And so everybody in the community has an opportunity, and that's why we do this, to be able to give feedback to these, to four questions.
Okay.
By the way, the four questions are, and I think I shared that with you last time, but the four questions are the greatest assets. You're trying to sell your community to the candidates, so that's a listing of that. And then the second one is, what is its strengths, greatest assets of the school district? Again, you're selling it to the candidates. The third one is what kind of hurdles, problems will they face when they come there? You know, for instance, Colorado school finance, things like that. And, and then the fourth one is basically what characteristics would you like to see in the superintendent? So, okay, so those are the questions that the stakeholder group will answer as well as the online groups, okay? All right, the application deadline then is going to be March 5th, 15th. Okay? That gives, that gives Paul and I opportunity to, well, gives the applicants opportunity to be able to apply. And then also we can begin the, the vetting process, but we will be well ahead of that before that deadline. But that gives us plenty of time for applicants to apply. You okay with that? That's a, what is, March 15th, I think is a Monday, maybe not. Yeah, it is, it's Monday.
Okay.
Okay, then the next time we meet as a board, that's where we would meet in executive session. Paul or I, Paul and I would meet with, it is a stakeholder groups. Because they're going to interview the candidates as well. And now it doesn't mean that all the stakeholders groups, you can have a combination of people in the stakeholder groups, all right? And that's what I would recommend. And then we would meet with them to kind of give them some structure. And then we go into executive session and we review the candidates. And eventually Paul and I will come in with a, a, a short list of candidates that best match the criteria you're looking for. And, and then, and then you would pick your finalists and act, bring anywhere, have to. So it would be anywhere from two to four candidates probably. And then we would also generate interview questions during that time, so. And then we put together an interview schedule. So anyway, we would do that on April the 13th. Is there a problem with that? Every board, board member needs to be there, April the 13th.
Good for me.
Is that a regular meeting date for you, by the way, or?
I don't think so.
Okay. But it's a Tuesday, which makes it nice. Now, if you, if you want us to meet, come down or meet in person, that probably would work well for us too. I, I haven't talked to Paul about that, but Paul's what, an hour and a half away?
I, I'm not even that. And I, I probably have seen many of you in the city market or Safeway down there. It's where I do my grocery shopping, so.
Oh, okay.
Hour, hour, 10 minutes, just depends on how fast I want to drive down the Dolores Canyon.
We haven't.
Not today, you wouldn't.
No, I would not. I'm kind of glad we're doing this remotely and I'm not in my car driving down there.
Yeah.
What we would do then is that Paul would be there in person and I would be there virtually, I may not be there. But you know, we have insurance on our consults against hostile boards. I just made that up, okay? So, so I didn't know you were that close, Paul, that's awesome. Okay, all right, so that, you may want to do the stakeholder, we'll, we'll figure that out. All right, then we have the candidate interviews for the 20th and 21st. Does that look okay for everybody?
No, I, my son bought airline tickets for me to fly to Florida on the 21st, on the 20th.
Isn't that, isn't that wrong? There's something wrong with that.
Yeah, he, he told me I needed a vacation.
I see. So when are you leaving?
I am leaving the 20th. I fly out of Denver at 10:30 on the 20th. So I could do it the 19th or I could do it the 16th, 17th.
Yeah, let's sort on April. So you're leaving the 20th.
Let me remind you also that the 20th is the regularly scheduled board meeting for April. I don't know how that plays into that, but that's our.
I've got it down for the 13th, I don't know why.
It's the third Tuesday of the month and so that was.
Okay.
Application deadline is the 15th of March. Okay, we could, we could move it up a week.
Okay, that works.
So, yeah, we, we can move it up to, wait a minute, we had the board meeting on the 13th, so we need to give them some time. So we can move it back a week, I forgot about the board meeting on 13th. Can we move it back, when are you coming back, Jerry?
I will be home the 24th.
Oh, okay. So we could go the following week on the 27th, 28th?
Okay.
Everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
I'm just concerned about the, the timeframe, the pushing it back like that.
Well, you're going to have your, you're going to have your candidates by that time.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, that's the interviews, right, that we're doing?
Right.
Okay. So that, the 27th and 28th will be doing our interviews.
Right. And I'll give them plenty of time. Are you okay with that?
Yep. The, Norman, just to clarify that April's meeting is on the 20th, not the 13th.
Yeah, it's on the 20th.
Oh, did I?
Well, no. Yeah.
He's scheduling it for the 13th, but our regular board meeting is on the 20th.
Okay.
Schedule it for the 7th.
Yeah, we got to leave it at 13th so that Cherry can be there.
Right.
Is that okay with that, everybody? Okay, because the 13th, Cherry has to be there because that really, you know, full board unless you don't like her or something. But anyway, so we'll leave it at the 13th, the board meeting and the interviews will be on the 27th, 28th. So then you're going to select, you're going to select a superintendent on May 3rd. Now, I think we're going to test it, I'm going to test a little bit. We may be able to have you select superintendent on the 29th. But I'll double check on that.
Okay.
I'm going to put it down as May 3rd right now.
Okay. So board, what we'll do is meet the 13th and go through what Norman has said. And then we'll have a regular board meeting on the 20th. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Okay.
But Cherry, then you would do that virtually then on the 20th, huh?
Well, no, Cherry, noise will run it and I would, and I will be on virtually, but Cherry noise will run it.
Oh, okay.
And that meeting on the 13th will largely be an executive session.
Right.
Talking about candidates and interview questions.
Okay, and Phyllis will post that for supporting like.
Yeah, but she's got to be careful because that's where everybody is making the mistake. And I, I'll deal with that when the time comes.
Okay.
How they post it.
Okay.
All right. So then you'll have your superintendent report July 1st. Or before that, if they want to come in and visit the district.
Well, and Lori said that she would show them around if they want to come in early.
Yeah, they, they usually do.
Okay.
I have to ask this question, do you think you have any internal candidates? Don't, no names?
I, I don't know. I have not heard any, anybody express, but this is all happening within three weeks, so.
Never know, never know. I've had, I've had teachers apply.
Yeah.
Okay, so who's going to be the point of contact with the district?
That would be Phyllis Lockhart. She is Lockhart.
Is that the one that is retiring?
Yes, yes, she's, she's the board secretary, also the admin secretary. So you can call me for most things, but if you need information that you don't think I would have, Phyllis will have it.
Yeah, we will probably work through Phyllis with a lot of things.
Yes.
And we'll, we'll include you and any kind of emails and stuff like that, okay? So I'll put, I'll put Phyllis down and then L O C K H A R T.
I believe so. Yeah.
Okay. All right, pull up your advertising. Wait a minute, let's, let's go back up, up. So that's going to be our timeline, all right? Everybody okay?
Uh huh.
Right, because that's going to be posted when we get the criteria set. Timeline parts, not all of it, a lot of your timeline will be posted with the criteria. That helps candidates realize what their deadlines are. Okay, advertising now. As you could see, if you have the advertising in front of you, McChrissa Jacobson really gets the word out. They have over 4,000 contacts where they send out a note, notice saying that this, this opening is here. And then they, they also use Facebook, Twitter, LinkedIn, School Board Associations across the country, School Administrators Associations across the country. And then also School Spring, and then there's also Council of Greater School, City Schools. Those are all free advertising, okay? So number of districts your size will do the first two on the cost. The AASA, which is a school, let's see, what is it, Administrators School Association? American Association of School Administrators, American Association of School Administrators. And they will use that for 30 days. And the one that really gets the attention is Top Schools Job. It's an online advertisement with Education Week. And most every administrator gets that. And it's $495. Now you can get it in print, which really doesn't help much. Or if you're interested in, in a diverse type of superintendent, an African-American, a Hispanic, Asian. You could also advertise in the National Alliance of Black School Educators or the Association of Latino Administrators and Superintendents. And those are listed there as well. One district, the top six, and they had 5,000 students. Anyway, what would you want to do?
Okay, repeat that, please.
What would you like to do as far as advertising position, as far as paid advertising? If, if anything at all?
The, the AASA? Do you have any recommendations?
Yeah, my recommendation would be the first two for sure.
Two.
I, I like Education Week, definitely.
Yeah, add that one as well. So the top two, Education Week, Top School Jobs is Online Education Week.
Thank you. So do you have to, I mean, you don't do.
I'm sorry? Cherry?
Oh, I was just going to say, we can pick out of the two if we decided to only do one, correct? We don't have to go.
Oh, no, yeah, you just, you could do one or the other or both. I would suggest the online.
Okay. And, and so this will cost the district an additional $900?
Yes.
If you did both of them, yeah.
Okay.
Nine hundred, almost, yeah. Exactly nine hundred, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I think it's for, as I've given.
Yeah, I do.
I do too.
Everything is so uncertain. I'd like to, I'd like to have a, a few extra good candidates and none at all.
Right, right.
It's, it's really a small amount on top of what you're spending and the investment you're making and finding the right leader, so.
You're right.
Right, yeah. I'm in agreement with the top two, AASA and the Top School Jobs.
Okay. Paul, you're doing Norwood. How many states? Paul, you're doing Norwood. How many states? Did you get applications from?
You know, we've gotten them from big, big districts, little districts, rural, urban, from the East Coast to California. And, you know, a healthy number from, you know, from, from Colorado, but so even a small district like that, and they chose to just do the Top School Jobs, the Online Education Week, that seems to be. And when I look at the 17 applicants we've gotten, a, a number came through the McPherson and Jacobson website, so. But there were a couple of mentions of Top School Jobs as a source of where they found it, and then obviously Casby and Case and, you know, the state associations, so.
Well, there we go. We're gonna go with the top two, okay. All right, then. As far as compensation, do you, did you guys ever have a conversation about what you would like as far as a parameter? It's not a commitment, it's just something that we could tell the candidates when they ask, what do you think they're gonna pay us? And I'm gonna say, well, this is the range that they, that they're targeting right now. You can always negotiate, et cetera, but. So what, what do you think is a range for you?
Well, I can tell you what Lori is making.
Okay.
Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that helps.
It's a starting point.
And I'm not, I'm not sure it's a starting point, because she has a lot of experience too. But she's at 136, 780.
Does that include her benefits?
No, it does not include her benefits. So benefits will be included. Her, she gets an extra $400 a month for vehicle expense because she's driving her own vehicle. So.
Okay, what do you think, Ignacio went with 120 to 135? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
I, I'm sorry, repeat that.
I'd said Ignacio went with 120 to 135. In their, I don't know what they're negotiating, because they had selected. But is that what you're saying?
Our salary page say, you know, do we have a salary schedule or on her or on superintendents, or is that just solely up to the board?
That's solely up to the board.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't recall seeing one, okay.
Yes, it's solely up to the board.
We know where she started at?
Um. No.
We do, but I just don't have it right now.
I, I wanna say 110, but I'm, I think that I'm wrong, but I think it was 110. You know, that ballpark, that ballpark.
I think that, I think that's the ballpark. But there, there are smaller school districts around here, and I can't remember which ones that are making, where, where the superintendent is making more than Lori. So she's.
Yeah.
I think Bayfield is above that.
Bayfield is about that?
I'd say above that.
Above that?
Yeah, that's what I thought. I thought there was somebody else, and I don't remember who at this time.
So Board, what range do you want us to do?
125 to 145. I agree with Chris.
I agree with Chris.
I agree.
Oh, you're gonna get him. You're gonna get the superintendent. That's our range. That's good.
Okay.
125.
Are you okay with that?
Yeah, I'm, yes.
Lori, Sharon?
Yeah, I'm okay, I'm starting, yeah, the 125, and I was kind of back and forth on where to, to end, but yeah, 145 is good.
Okay, that sounds good to me.
I think, Paul, are you okay with that?
It sounds very competitive.
I would say it is. You're gonna pull them in from, from Utah and New Mexico and Arizona that way too, so. I think that's good. Okay. Very good. You guys responded well. Not saying that if you've been Lori, you didn't, but you all, you all keep forward there. All right, now what we need, Cherry, is, is to have Phyllis send, well, I'll send us contact information on every board member. I tell you what I'll do. I'll send an email, or Paul, why don't you send them an email listing what kind of information that we're gonna need to put into the brochure. Okay? The contact, the occupation, number of years they worked on the board.
Okay, Phyllis, is that on our, is that on the website?
Well, some of it, I guess it depends on what kind of information they want.
I'll work with you, Phyllis, to get what we need. It's, you know, I could parse it out from your website, Cherry, but I think it'd be easier if, if the board members just kind of, yeah, I'll work with Phyllis. We'll, we'll get it taken care of.
Okay.
You know, if Cherry, if Cherry's on vacation a lot, don't put vacation. But retire.
I'm really not on vacation a lot. I've got my laptop, my computer, but.
Okay, I, I was just kidding.
Jerry, I'll write yours for you, don't worry. I'll, I'll write yours for you, don't worry.
Oh, bless your heart. You could, you could. We've known each other that long.
I know you well enough. I could do that.
You could.
Okay, so that pretty much takes care of our first meeting. We do need to, one more thing, and that is, which I didn't list, and I should have. We need to identify the stakeholder groups you would like to have us meet with, and then eventually Phyllis will organize that. And if Paul's that close, you may want to do it in person. Anyway, so here's the, here's the typical stakeholder groups. You have teachers. You have administrators. You have classified staff. You have, you have the community. You have students, and you have parents. Those are your typical ones. Now, some people combine parents and community, but your community is pretty good size. And some people combine classified and administrators. Because a lot of your classified are charged with transportation, et cetera. So what would you like as far as stakeholder groups?
How many, how many names do we need? How many people?
Well, I think first, Cherry, it's deciding which groups do you want, and then, you know, an ideal size, I mean, I, I did one, I did two of them in Norwood, so I did one with, I did one with teachers and staff, and I did one with community and parents, and there were about, I think it was about 20 teacher staff, and there was about 30 in the, in the community group, so. So.
That was virtual.
It just kind of depends on how many, how many different groups you want.
Alamosa, Alamosa, which is about your size, is doing stakeholder groups right now. And they, they have, I think, five stakeholder groups.
Whoa.
And they, they went with, I think it was 10 to 15 people per group.
Okay.
Wow.
So, anyway. Up to you guys.
When you guys say, oh, I was just gonna ask a question. When you say community, are you just talking about anybody else, or is that, will that include business owners?
Yes, it includes business owners, all those people. I, I did Summit, and Summit had 35 people, and we did it virtually. That was entertaining, anyway.
And I did the, I did the Norwood ones virtually, and I, you know, I guess in COVID, you know, whether or not you're allowed to have that many people in a room, I'm fine to do it in person, but I'm also fine to do it, you know, virtually like this. I, I think the level of engagement is, is, is as good in this setting. Everyone's kind of used to it now. But I'm happy to do whatever you, you would like, in person or virtual.
What you're gonna find, once the word gets out that there's an online, because of virtual, they're gonna go online pretty quick. Rather than, but what's nice about going with community, stakeholder groups, is they have a conversation. It's really nice. So, kind of like what happened tonight when we did the criteria. So.
Well, I like the suggestion that Paul said for teachers, admin, staff as one group, and then the other group as community members. What?
Where, where the parents?
Parents and community, yeah.
Okay.
Do we want them separate? Some, I, but most of our parents are pretty active community-wide too. Tammy?
Two, two groups then, Cherry?
Well, let's see what the board thinks. Tammy, what do you think?
I like to break them out that way too, but I think parents and community, but I think we need a separate possibly with business and community, so maybe parents, community, and then business community, so we have three groups that we reach out to.
Okay, Jeff?
Well, I think I, my sense would be parents and, and community, because I think the community is gonna be a lot of the business community in any case. And then these are, again, people that are usually involved in a bunch of things. I, I don't feel strongly about it, but that's my take.
Stacy?
I like Tammy's idea. I like the teacher administrators in one group, parents and community, and business owners in another group, or business and community, and parents in a group by themselves. Although, well.
Where are we gonna put the students?
Yeah, I, I think the students should be separate. What do you think?
That would be my recommendation, if you do want to capture the student voice, because they'll, you know, give them their own opportunity as opposed to trying to compete with adults. We, we can all sometimes talk too much.
I, I agree. If, if we're gonna have students, I think students need to be by themselves.
Okay.
Yeah.
I think, I think we need to have students. I feel pretty strongly about that.
I agree. Yeah.
I agree.
Chris?
Well, I, I agree with the students on their own and part, I, I think, you know, you could do business community separate from parent community. Or combine them, doesn't matter to me there. The, the staff, for me personally, I'm almost leaning toward, I think, like, teachers should almost be separate than administrative, so you get more candid, more candor responses from teachers when their administrators aren't. And all.
That's.
That's very true.
That's the true statement.
Yeah.
I mean, if we're really looking for a, a good snapshot of everybody's candor, then I, I don't see what it would hurt.
I don't either.
I, I agree.
I like that.
We want, you know, the, the teachers are on the front line, and we want to know what they, how they feel.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. I 100% agree with that.
Yeah.
So Cherry, what are you, what are you hearing, Cherry?
Okay, well, let me hear what Lance says.
Oh, I agree.
I agree with Chris. I just, I just don't, I don't want the community part of it to be a bully session, like it seems to be happening in a lot of different places. I don't know, I don't know, I don't know, can you restrict? I don't know. I mean, the community needs to be heard, but I think they need to be heard samey. And the fact, I see John smiling.
It, it's very, you're very true, Vance. That's very true. And I actually had that written down, so.
You know, the, the type of questions that are asked in the way, you know, I, I've sat in your seat, Lance, as a board member, so I'm, I'm well aware of that, but, you know, the, the nature of the questions, it's really focusing on your strengths as a community. And so it's really, you know, it's an opportunity for people to brag on both the Cortez community, the Montezuma Cortez School District, to highlight some of the issues, so, you know, and it's done in, in about an hour, so it's not, there's not a lot of time for people to, to do a lot of venting. And, and again, I, you know, sure, you're gonna hear some comments. I, I think in the online survey, they tend to be a little bit more unvarnished. You know, people in these forums tend to be fairly respectful. You know, where you'll see some of the comments are in that online survey, where they'll be a little bit more candid.
Asking, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is teachers and staff, I should say staff, would be one stakeholder group. Admin would be another stakeholder group.
Okay.
Students, a stakeholder group. And that's four, right? And then the next, that's three, and so the next one would be, you, and I, I don't care, but do you want community and parents together? Or separate? I think that my personal thing is, most of the community members have kids in school. So I don't see why we need to separate them.
It works. That works real well. It just, parents really go online real hard. Pages and pages and pages of comments, but anyway. So I think it captures them when you do the input. Okay, so community, parents, teachers, administrators and staff, right?
Yes. Well, no, administrators is one group and staff's another.
So there'd be three, there'd be teacher, administrators, and staff.
So.
And then students.
Administrators are separate from teacher, staff.
Oh, but, oh, I see, put teachers and staff together, okay.
Yeah, administrators are separate.
Okay.
And then Tammy, we do need to make sure that we get our businesses involved, but I think that under community, you're going to find, find it anyway.
I'm good with that. That's good.
Okay.
Usually, usually what happens there is that you as a board can, can recruit these membership of committees, that community that's gonna respond to the stakeholder group. That can happen that way. We'll, we'll have, have that conversation with Phyllis, and we'll figure out how to get, to get community invited to the stakeholder group.
Okay, I already have a list of names going, so.
Okay, so there you go. There you go. Okay. So let me re, restate. Community and parents together. Teachers, staff together. Administrators, separate. Students, separate. That it? Okay. All right. Get that, Paul?
Can I ask a question? Yeah, I just, on the community, can we say like, give the board, or not give the board, offer the board the opportunity to name three names in the community that could be invited? Do you, do you understand what I'm saying?
Oh, yeah, I've done that.
Kind of nominate, nominate some people.
Yeah.
Yeah, if you. You're gonna have overlap, community and parents.
And if you have people that you really want to make sure they get a specific invitation, then yep, we definitely would want to know who those individuals are.
I have three or four that have already reached out that wants to be a part of it, so.
Okay. That's up to the board, as far as community, and the staff, you know, everything else falls into place, so. Okay, so that's our stakeholder group, and that's gonna happen pretty quick. That's gonna be February 8th and 9th, so. Okay, so between now and then, we need to get everybody on board. We need to get it scheduled together to be able to have those five groups meet. And so what we'll probably do there is teachers and, and staff will probably be after after school. Administrators, we could do during the school day. Students, usually we want to do it during their lunch. And then parents and community, we could do in the evening. So that takes care of it, all right?
Right, that looks good.
Do that in one day, or we could do it in two days as we scheduled, so we'll get that all figured out. And, and that won't be that hard. And it's gonna get, give you guys good feedback. All right.
Okay.
Anything else that you need? Any other questions?
I have a question.
Covered an awful lot tonight.
I, I have a question.
Uh-huh.
In, in your honest opinion, in, in, I know that, I probably know what you're gonna say, but with, with the shortage of superintendent, or the, not shorties, let's just say with the excessive superintendent openings in the state of Colorado, you know, with so many of them in Denver resigning, and you say you're dealing with Bayfield and Ignacio and Norwood and the Drangos dealing with one. Do you think where we're at, we, well, I mean, I, I just want to know, you think we're gonna get quality, as good a quality candidates?
I think, I think you are. I think if you'd have started, if you had attended later, you would have lost out, but I think your timing is good. And so I think you're gonna get 25 to 30 applicants. And out of that 25 to 30, you're gonna have a good seven, eight that you're gonna have to wrestle over. And at least that's my thought. Paul, you know, with Norwood, I think we're really shocked by the turnout we had in Norwood. Or the quality of Norwood. The, I'd give you an example. Now, of course, Cheyenne Mountain's a very popular district, but I had 47 applicants, and we had 26, from 26 different states. And I've got, I would say 30 of those applicants are quality, up, that could do the job. And so then also, you know, Summit had 45, last year, so, anyway. But I think you're gonna get a good, you, your board has a good reputation, am I right?
I believe so.
I, I don't sense any problems here, if, if there is, you know. So I think as long as the board has a good reputation, the criteria is good, and the criteria is rich. I think you're gonna get good applicants, yes. You're in good shape.
Thank you.
If that answers your question.
Yeah, thank you.
You know, and we will. You know, and we will, you know, I'm, I've got some people that really want to get to Colorado that are quality. You know, and if they're interested in that, in the four corners, I think that's good. So anyway, I hope that answered your question. Any others?
The, the February ninth is gonna be a Zoom meeting, then, the, the stakeholder.
What do you want to do, Paul, there?
You know, I, I'm, I think we, we can be flexible there. I, I do think we gotta bear in mind with COVID that it may be a situation where it might be, people may feel safer doing it via Zoom.
It works beautifully, Zoom.
Yeah.
It really does.
You know, I think you're gonna lose a lot of people if you don't do, at least provide that option. And I, I mean, I've been in gobs of Zoom meetings and I do them regularly for, for business and and I think it works out well.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Yeah, I had, at Cheyenne Mountain, I had forty-five students on Zoom. And we, we managed it really well and so, no, I think let's, let's do that first and when we get to that second meeting, you know, I do think that needs to be in person. Because that way you guys could see, see the videos and, we do have videos of the lists that we bring forward, things like that, so. Okay, so we will go virtual.
Do we participate in the stakeholder meetings?
It's up to you.
And what do we do?
It's up to you, as long as you're not an intimidating board. They see your face, they shut up. No, I've had, I've had it go both ways and it doesn't seem to impact the output. You're right, though, if teachers and administrators are together, the teachers shut up. They don't say a word.
Well, and I'm afraid they'd, they'd shut up with us on there too, so.
Oh, is that right? Okay.
Yeah, you know, I, I'm for us not being in these stakeholder meetings. I think those people need to be, need to feel comfortable enough to say what they feel and what they really want in this whole situation and I, 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 I think we need to, to let them, I think we need to get the most honest answers that we can from that. And doing that, I think, staying out of those meetings is how we're gonna get that.
I agree.
I agree.
Can you provide Zoom, can you provide recordings of the, of the, if there's Zoom with the community that we could watch after?
Yeah, so what, what we do is we, we capture all the comments as, as quick as I can. I wish I'd kept up some shorthand skills, but we record the comments without attributing them to individuals. And, and then we summarize all that in a document to you, so. You know, we, we don't, we don't record them other than, you know, being able to record the comments and then give you that document, so. Again, I think that, that helps the individuals feel like they can speak freely and then.
I, I like that.
Yeah, the comments, the comments are their comments. They're not all or my comments.
Yeah, I try really hard to capture what people say to the, to the extent that I can. Obviously, there's some limitations when I, you know, people are talking fast, but try very hard to capture what people have said and, and record that faithfully and, and report it back to you.
We will not record foul language.
That might be good. So Board, I guess the consensus is that we will not attend it, so.
I agree.
And I have, and I agree as, I agree as well on that.
Okay.
And I do have a question for Norm, if, if nobody else has anything. Wait, you, you asked us and we talked about basically the, the traits of the individual, right, that we want. Now, what about experience? Is there an experience criteria that you're setting for that as far as professional?
I can, I can include, that's right, that's a good point. I, that was not mentioned. And that can be, that would be included in the criteria. So in other words, you would like a leader who's been a site leader for at least three to five years. Or you could go with, you know, and that's pretty typical for a district your size. And so we could put that in there as well as you could put in qualified, doctor preferred. If you want to do that, we could put that in the language too. So that's up to you.
I, I don't care about doctor, but do we want to have, have certification? Do we want that in there?
Yeah, well, because I know we kind of ran into that problem. Colorado certified superintendent is what it was. But I think what Lori has is an equivalent, if I'm understanding correct.
Right.
You don't need, you don't need to even, you don't need even have a degree to be a superintendent in Colorado.
I know.
Right.
Crazy. So anyway, site-based requirement really requires that certification.
Okay.
I, I could put that in the language.
Well, no, I, I don't think that, what's the board's pleasure?
I don't think it's needed.
I, I, it's not necessary. I mean, if they're, if they're qualified, they're qualified. I know plenty of qualified people that lose a job to somebody that has a degree that has no experience.
Right, okay. Chris?
Well, I, I suppose we'd be able to, to go through their resumes and experience. You know, I just, sometimes when you put required experience and preferred experience, that you can limit your pool or make your pool more diverse or just make it more, it could work both ways, I guess, you know. So it was just something I knew and touched on, so it's not, it's not critical to me, but I just wanted to bring it up.
No.
That's. Yeah.
Okay, I think I've captured it. I'll include that in the criteria.
Okay.
Qualifications, in other words, so, okay. Alright, so send me your, send the emails to Sherry.
Right.
With your list and then she will send them to me and then I'll put together, Paul and I'll put together the criteria. It'll be a real tight summary of your comments. And then we need to have Sherry approve those and then we'll move it on from there. Get it posted ASAP.
Okay, now then it will be later morning before I can get the information to you, because I have a school safety meeting in the morning.
No problem. Whenever, whenever you get it to me, you get it to me. Whenever you get it, just make it to me tomorrow, because the next day I'm gonna be tied up all day, so.
Going on vacation, huh?
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm working with, I'm working with Cheyenne Mountain on their second meeting, so. That's gonna be a fun meeting, that's gonna be a tough one.
When you get a chance, Sherry, can you send us all of these dates? I mean, I think I've got it writ, all written down, but just to make sure that we're all on the same page.
You mean on the timeline?
Yeah.
Okay.
Well, I, I'm gonna send that out. I'll send out the adjusted.
Yeah.
I'll send out the adjusted timeline.
Okay, and I'll just forward it to the board like I did the last, whenever I get things from you, Norman, I just, I just forward it onto my board.
Sounds good.
And what I'm gonna do, Sherry, is I'm gonna send the timeline and then, both the timelines are gonna be the criteria, okay? And I'll have a listing of all your comments and then I'll have the condensed criteria that'll be posted.
Okay.
It'll all be in one document, okay?
Okay.
There you go.
Alrighty.
Alright, ah, you guys will be a lot of fun to work for, I tell you. At, at least, it feels like that right now. So, anyway. The first meeting with stakeholders is gonna be virtual and then after that, it'll be in person, everything will be in person, okay?
Okay.
Awesome.
Good enough. Thank you. Good night.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sherry. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you tech department, thank you Phyllis. So.
Hang in there, Phyllis, just a few more months.
Yeah, we're. We're gonna make her work for her retirement.
We haven't voted to accept it yet, so.
Oh, that's true.
She, that's her plan. It may not be the board's plan.
Oh, what an angel, what an angel.
I don't think I, I don't think I, I'm gonna be the one that's gonna cross Phyllis. I mean, you guys can do it if you want to, but not me.
Don't know, I am from Italy and so I'm not sure, you know, how you can deal with an Italian. That sounds vindictive.
I fear Phyllis, so. She can do whatever she wants as far as I can see.
Lance, Lance knows where the real power resides in the school.
We might have to hire you guys again to do a search for her, so.
He's gonna be hard to replace. I've heard Lori, man, it's gonna be a tough one.
Yep, yep. Ignacio has a similar secretary, she's just a jewel. And that's so critical, so critical.
It is.
Anyway, everybody have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.